Good morning. I would like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, 10 o'clock meeting of January 23rd, 2024. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Prior to proceeding, I would like to take a moment to recognize a valued member of the Information Technology Department who recently passed. Our thoughts and our prayers are with them, their family, and their fellow team members during this difficult time. Please rise for the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Oh merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Present.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Here.
District 4, Commissioner Bradford.
Here.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District 1, Chairman Oakley.
Here. Let it be noted that we have a quorum and everyone is present this morning. Now's the time for public comment. Assistant has given an opportunity to comment on any item in the future agenda or before us today, the board, and other business under the board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled by, follows first, we will take public comment from those persons here present. Then we will take public comment from those that have pre-registered on WebEx and are currently on cue. We request the, when you address the board, you please direct your, do not direct anything personally against a commissioner or a board member or team member, but rather to the issues at hand. This will give respect to each and every board member and the public. After starting your, or stating your name and address for the clerk, you'll be given three minutes to speak. After two minutes, a beep will sound indicating you have one minute left. Then your, when your time is up, two beeps will sound and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected at the time their time is up. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I have two individuals that have signed up. William Justiniano and Ron Roderoff. Mr. Justiniano, if you would please come to the podium.
Good morning to all. My name is William Justiniano. I'm with Capitol Ministries and I'm a chaplain with the Sheriff's Department. First thing I would like to do-
Your address.
My address, 27740 Mallencourt Wesley Chapel, Florida, 33544.
All right, thank you.
The first thing that I would like to do is give thanks to the Lord for being here and that God, for those that have fallen, you know, been in the service of authority, you know, I would like to intercede for them and pray for all public officials. Thank you, Lord, for this day and thank you for giving us all the knowledge that we need so we can be here and do the right thing for you, Lord, and thank you for being here and being able to give all the knowledge. And for those in authority, thank you for, as we decide the future of this county, that you be present in our hearts. Thank you and bless us all. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Ron Roderoff?
State your name and address for the clerk.
Ron Waldorf, 18723 East Road, Hudson, Florida. The reason I'm here today is because my son goes to the school, Hudson High School, where the child got killed on Kitten Drive Avenue a little while ago. And I think it's too little too late. If you spoke to the parents of that child, I think you would find that what you are doing now is a couple of years too late, based on the chats that my wife has with the community groups. I also think they need to do more over there. I think they need crossing guards. Even though they're high school students, you need crossing guards. We drive down this road all the time. We're doing five miles over the speed limit and here comes this guy in his pickup truck passing on a double yellow line. I think in addition to what they've done, they need to notify the Pasco Sheriff to hide on the street and ticket some of these guys that are speeding. Okay, that's what I'd like to see done. We also live off of East Road and there's a, East Road dead ends at Denton Avenue. There's only a stop sign for East. I'm wondering if the board and the people in this room are waiting for somebody to get killed on Denton Avenue and East Road like they did at the high school. I was in here about a year and a half ago speaking about this. They sent me an email. Somebody took me out and introduced me to somebody. Nothing ever happens. So I'm just wondering, are you people waiting for somebody to get killed on Denton and East? Anybody have anything to say about that?
We don't talk back and forth during public comment.
Okay, all right. I didn't know that. So I think that, I'm a CDL truck driver. I know traffic-
One more minute.
Situation. And I spoke to somebody on the board and they said that, well, it may be a safety issue. Maybe it'll cause more accidents than it'll, not so, based on 49 years of CDL driving, by the way, without an accident. How many people in Pasco County have driven a commercial vehicle for 49 years without an accident? There isn't any. I'm the only one. So I'd like for somebody to start again and see if we can get a stop sign. We also need a speed bump. We live on the dead end curve of East Road. We need a speed bump. We got crotch rockets and people flying around that corner. It's just a matter of time before somebody T-bones myself or my wife on the driver's door and somebody gets killed. So if somebody can help me with that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is anyone else in the audience wish to speak at this time? Seeing no one.
And Mr. Chair, there is no one on WebEx for public comment.
No one on WebEx. Okay. At this time, I will close public comment and we will move on to, where we going here? All right, we'll go to resolutions. Madam Clerk, these are all, pretty much all time certain. I guess we go to RS2?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
After you do RS2, I do have everyone here from RS3. If we could do that right away, that'd be great.
Oh, they're here for RS3?
Yeah, so we can, you can do RS2 and then that if you could.
Okay, we'll do that first. RS3.
All right. Would Senator Mike Fazano please step to the podium?
He's always early.
Good morning. I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 24-059, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing Mike Fazano for receiving the 2023 National Animal Care and Control Association's Bill Lehman Memorial Award. Whereas each year, the National Animal Care and Control Association, NACA, recognizes an outstanding individual not directly employed in the animal care and control field who has shown exceptional awareness and support of animal control and care-related matters. And whereas NACA has selected Pasco County Tax Collector Mike Fazano as our 2023 recipient of the Bill Lehman Memorial Award for his hard work and compassion in animal welfare, both in the state of Florida and in Pasco County. And whereas in 2012, as a Florida state senator, Mike Fazano drafted legislation to provide protections for pets by creating a statewide animal abuser registry. Senator Fazano titled Senate Bill 618 as Dexter's Law. And even though the bill did not pass, it provided the groundwork for the future passage of many local animal abuser registries throughout the state, including the one passed unanimously by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners in 2017. In 2018, Mike Fazano endorsed a proposed amendment to the Florida Constitution to ban dog racing in the state of Florida. On November 6th, 2018, Florida voters passed the amendment with a 69% majority. And whereas Mike Fazano continues to be a strong supporter of animal welfare in Pasco County, as the Pasco County Tax Collector, all of Mike Fazano's tax collectors' offices routinely highlight the Pasco County Animal Services, PCAS, Pet of the Week on their lobby televisions, and share the PCAS shelter content on social media platforms, all of which have resulted in adoptions and helped spread public awareness of shelter and animal welfare initiatives. And whereas in 2018 and 2023, the Pasco County Tax Collector's Office held fundraisers for Friends of Animal Services, with both fundraisers raising over $11,000 to support the nonprofit. This funding helped PCAS purchase new medical equipment and created a medical fund to help citizens with one-time emergency medical care for their pets. And whereas Mike Fazano exemplifies the spirit of Bill Lehman in his continual promotion and support of animal welfare organizations, his generosity in supporting nonprofit rescues and animal friend groups, and his influence in legislative efforts to improve state law and local ordinances to protect animals. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby commends Mike Fazano as the recipient of the 2023 National Animal Care and Control Association's Bill Lehman Memorial Award for his support in animal welfare. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 23rd day of January 2024. Second.
Got a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Mr. Chair.
Okay. Yes, sir. We've got another presentation, so.
I've known him since his hair was white. All right. It wasn't white. Now it's white. We've been together a long time. I did, and he did his very first legislative act.
Right. I think we have a presentation from Animal Services to Mr. Fazano here. Mike?
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Schumate, Director of Animal Services. It was our pleasure to nominate Mike Fazano for this award from the National Animal Care and Control Association. They sent us the award. Our Assistant Director, Spencer Conover, is the Vice President of the NACO Board. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to be here today. He's up in Pensacola. We're helping out the Humane Society up there with some reorganization, some shelter training. But Mike, this award is for you. Enjoy all the great things you've done for us. I think we feel pretty blessed here to have you in this county and doing a lot of good things for us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. God bless you, buddy. Thank you very much. Thank you. I know it's hard to believe, but I'm actually speechless. No, no.
I wouldn't believe that.
Well, Commissioners and Mike, thank you very much. I'm going to share this with all of my staff. Greg Giordano specifically, because Greg was with me in those legislative years. Commissioner Bradford, you remember, in getting many of these legislative successes and almost successes. And now here at the Tax Collector's Office, over the last 10 years, as you know, we do a different charity every month. We have raised about $220,000 that help our pets throughout Pasco County, their owners, and protecting those pets. And Mike Schumot and his staff have been extremely helpful and this is truly an honor. Thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you. We got some folks who want to speak here.
It's Commissioner, wait, wait, wait.
Wait, wait, don't leave. Don't leave. We're not going to let you get away that quick.
I don't have a check for you this time.
Why not?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, Senator, you know, we were asked to sponsor this resolution for you and we're like, absolutely. The work that you've done, not just for animal services, but for our county, from your time in the legislature to now elevating the Tax Collector's Office to become not only probably providing, no offense to others, the best level of service and customer service for services in our county, but also using your office and your machine to capture much-needed funds and donations to support so many charities that otherwise wouldn't have help. And so your footprint and your passion and care for our county and our state is really unmatched. And so it's an honor to present you with this resolution today and thank you for all you do for not just us, but for the citizens of Pasco County.
Thank you, Commissioner. God bless you.
Mr. Starkey?
Mike, gosh, one of many awards, but I'm curious, is this your first national award?
Yes. Oh, I don't know. I have to look. No, I'm just, I believe it is. Oh, I'm sure there's some people that would like to give me an award, but I can't accept those type of awards.
And I have to say, I can't really, can you hold that up?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
Because that's beautiful. It's so simple and elegant. I just think that's a beautiful one and well-deserved. And of course, you know, you're very well-loved in this county and we appreciate all you do for all of the different-
Thank you.
-different nonprofits and our citizens in the county.
Well, I appreciate what you have done as well. Even though we weren't able to get Dexter's Law passed, you, as a Commissioner, stepped up to the plate as you always do and we appreciate that as well.
Mr. Bradford, I cut you short a while ago, so you want to say something more?
No, no, no.
You're good?
We're on time schedule.
Senator, Mr. Tax Collector, greatly appreciate all the great service you do for this county and the going above and beyond for helping our charities out is greatly appreciated. And I know you picked some great ones, so thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you, Commissioner.
In short, you may say that you touch every citizen in the county, some way or other.
Well, at least-
Mainly in taxes.
I can tell you, I touched their pocketbooks.
But all your 501(c)(3) are great deals that you put on, that you do and collect money for those. And it helps all the citizens in Pasco. And we certainly appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very much.
Now, I'd like for, if you will, the attorney and the clerk and Mr. Bradford, you're going to stand up here and the rest of us come down. We'll take a picture with him right quick.
Can I add one more thing?
Please.
So, in a little, as the tax collector, this affects you, in a little bit, we're going to have a hopefully lively discussion on Live Local. I don't know if you want to stay and listen.
Okay.
But it's a real challenge for us and your wisdom and knowledge might be helpful.
I'm actually in a directors' meeting right now with my directors and I probably have to go back to that, but anything I can do to help and assist, you know that, yeah.
We'll come down and get the picture.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right. Yes, sir. Well, thank you very much.
Are you coming down or are you going to stand up there?
Nope. Just fixing my jacket.
Take your time, my friend. Take your time. You're doing good.
Really good. Okay. Everybody ready here, please? Great. Thank you all.
And we want one more. Congratulations. Glad to see you.
Thank you, sir. Very God bless you. Thank you very much. There's a man.
All right, this, that was RS3.
Okay.
Now this RS2.
Commissioner Mariano, is it Resolution 3, HCA Bayonet Point?
Yes, yep. They're all here. You guys are going to come forward.
They're all here, okay.
All right, please.
Everybody?
HCA Florida Bayonet Point Hospital, please step to the podium. All right. I'll go ahead and read the resolution first. Resolution number 24-058, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing the importance of HCA Florida Bayonet Point Hospital. Whereas, as a beacon of support and healing for Hudson and the surrounding Pasco County area, HCA Florida Bayonet Point Hospital is a community cornerstone dedicated to delivering compassionate personalized care. And whereas, as HCA Florida Bayonet Point Hospital, more than 1,600 colleagues and over 790 physicians care for their patients of all ages like family. Key services include 24-hour emergency care, a comprehensive stroke center, a heart center, and a wound care and hyperbaric medicine chamber. And whereas, as the only designated trauma center in Pasco-Hernando and Citrus Counties, HCA Florida Bayonet Point Hospital is designated as a Level 2 Trauma Center for its 24-hour immediate coverage by general surgeons, in addition to its coverage in orthopedic surgery, neurosurgery, anesthesiology, emergency medicine, radiology, and critical care. And whereas, HCA Florida Bayonet Point Hospital's commitment to exceeding clinical expectations is affirmed by the prestigious recognition it has earned in the areas of quality and safety. Most notably, the hospital received a 2023 Health Grades Patient Safety Excellence Award, a distinction which places the hospital among the nation's top 10%. Recently, HCA Florida Bayonet Point Hospital was named one of America's 100 Best Hospitals for Orthopedic Spine and Vascular Surgery, Gastrointestinal Care and Surgery and Surgical Care. And whereas, HCA Florida Bayonet Point Hospital recently opened 800, oh, I'm sorry, 85 million patient tower housing, 102 patient beds in a modern, state-of-the-art setting for inpatient rehabilitation, progressive care, surgical intensive care, orthopedics, and spine care. And whereas, HCA Florida Bayonet Point Hospital has embarked on a 20- We also have Heather Fiorentino, who wasn't able to join us today. She is our Vice Chair. Dr. Rami Akell is our Chief of Staff, and Dr. Jose Pascual is our Vice Chief of Staff. They're both back at the hospital treating patients right now. But without their leadership and dedication, we could not continue to do what we do and continue to grow and evolve and meet the ever-changing needs of our rapidly growing community. I also want to introduce Will Constantine, our Assistant Chief Nursing Officer, who recently joined our organization. Healthcare is truly a calling, and I am so honored to go to work every day with hundreds of caregivers who dedicate their lives to caring for other people. These heroes spend days, nights, weekends, holidays, hurricanes, away from their families and their loved ones, putting the needs of others first and caring for our family and our loved ones. I have two of those incredible heroes with us today that I would like to accept this on behalf of Bayonet Point. I want to introduce Jessica Leonard and Lindsay Longstreet, two of our incredible nurses that are on the front lines caring for this community every single day. We are so honored and thank you so much for this acknowledgement.
I think we have someone who may want to say something.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kathy Pearson, Assistant County Minister for Public Services. I personally know how important this hospital is. Last August, my 38-year-old son, father of two beautiful little girls, daughter-in-law that was pregnant about five and a half months, my son was airlifted on an incident uncontrolled by him to Bayonet, near his trauma center. Folks, he was two hours from dying. Two hours from dying, and this hospital saved his life. The doctors, Dr. Solomon, Dr. Brown, the nurses, the incredible, incredible team that saved his life. And no, there was a hurricane there in that time, too. And so, my daughter-in-law, who was pregnant, five and a half months, they made arrangements for her to stay there 24/7. 24/7, they made arrangements for her to be by her husband. I was home taking care of the three and the five-year-old. I'm proud to say, my son got to witness the birth of his third daughter on December 10th because of these wonderful people behind us. I don't care what anybody says, this is one of the best hospitals, the most caring. And I was telling Sally, the only complaint my daughter-in-law had was, boy, I wish they had a little bit bigger cafeteria. That was her only complaint. So, I am blessed beyond 2023. I am glad it's gone, and I am so thankful that we are acknowledging this hospital, and thank you from the bottom of my heart, Commissioner. Thank you for sponsoring this. We really appreciate it. So, with that, thank you.
Mr. Mariano? That's not fair. I got to talk after that. Yeah. Should take it off.
You know, HCA Bayonet Point is such a special place. You know, from Dr. Musinero starting it many, many years ago, how it's grown so well, and you know, we're trying to help you keep on growing as best you can. The care that people get there is absolutely phenomenal. There was one point very recently, both my mother and my father were being treated at the same time, same days. Both of them got great care, great service. They're both doing great right now. They've helped me as well. Other family members, friends that I've had, go down there, and just knowing that you guys are there. I was very proud many years ago when you wanted to become a trauma center the first time, and went down to Tampa to testify and get your support to try to make it happen, and proud it's happened, and you've elevated from there. But I want to say, all the hard-working doctors, nurses, all your volunteers, the volunteer staff they have is amazing as well. All those people dedicated to make our community better. And Pasco's blessed with great hospitals across the board. You're just a shining star as well, and we're delighted that you're here, delighted that we can honor you with this reward, this award, because you've earned it every step of the way. So, thank you all.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate everything that y'all do. And he was right in saying, it seems like the county's becoming more and more in health with Moffitt, with Advent Health, with BayCare, with different hospitals, Orlando Health coming, All Children's coming, even another hospital or two looking at Pasco County to come to. The benefactor of all that and all your good work that you do are our citizens in Pasco County. So, you couldn't ask for anything better than that. And because everybody's trying to be number one in healthcare, we're going to get the best care throughout our whole county because of y'all. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
Well, my husband had heart surgery up there, so we know how renowned your hospital is, and we're certainly grateful that you're here in the community, and I love our partnerships together. So, thank you so much for coming today.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just one more thing. And Sal, I want to say, you are such a breath of fresh air coming in.
to do now, or?
It was just a couple of months ago, I went down to meet her, figure we spent probably
One more, and
Our other one is for the Star Team of the Year and the Star Performers. 15, 20 minutes, whatever. I'd like to keep that at the 11:45, just due to Over two hours she spent with me talking about what's going on, how they're doing it,
11:45, right.
Yes, sir. how the improvements are going, and the enthusiasm.
Okay. So, we're going to wait on
Unless you want to do the, I get rid of the consent agenda first.
And again, I want to thank you for being such a great leader for your hospital to take it to new heights.
Yeah, then we have ours.
So, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Get out for a picture?
All right, let's have a picture. Where's my sheet? If we'll, clerk and attorney will stay up here with Mr. Bradford. I have the following items. Yep. And the rest of us come down below.
We're good. It's nice to be tall.
C14 is withdrawn.
And they ate them.
C17 is pull and revise.
Thank you so much. It's a long time.
So, they found this one? C23, pull and revise. That was good.
Yeah. I hope they won.
Okay, everybody ready here first, please?
C24, pull and revise. C32, pull and revise.
Thank you.
C13, pull and revise.
Couple more. Thank you all.
And then I have pulled C10 because it cannot be voted on prior to a couple of items in
Thank you. Thank you very much.
A big one. public comment this afternoon, so I pulled it to this afternoon's meeting. So, I'll entertain a vote or a motion for the rest of the items on
Excuse me, I don't know if they got, oh, I see, C23 and C24 are going to get corrected to the right commission. That'll come off, okay. All right, move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Got a motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. All right, we'll move on to, well, C14's been withdrawn. C17, pull and revise.
Yes, good morning. Andrew Baxter, Facilities Management Director. C17 had a scrivener's error in it relating to the location of this park site. Pine Hill Park is technically within the city limits of Newport Richie. In one or two sections of the agenda item, it said Port Richie. So, with that clarification, we just recommend approval.
Okay. Little approval, a noted change?
Second.
I got a motion and second for approval and revise, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like so. Motion passed 5-0. Move on to C23. Pull and revise.
Good morning, Commissioners. Panos Konces, Transportation Engineering Assistant Director. Item C23 is being pulled and revised to correct the district number. It was erroneously stated as District 3. It's changed to District 4. I approve, I recommend approval.
Okay.
While he's up there, I'll make the motion to accept that change, but then I have a question for you on C20, even though I know we approved it.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
In my meetings with the county administrator yesterday, as we were going over this bridge that we're working on with the city of Newport Richie, I know they have plans to bring a multi-use path down Grand Boulevard, and I want to make sure that's part of the bridge design.
Okay. I have with me the project manager for that project, Clay Watkins.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Clay Watkins, Transportation Engineering Department. And yes, we will be, we're coordinating with the city on the whole project, so they're basically sort of working on what they want, and they'll be paying for it on the deck of the bridge, where there's going to be pedestrian crossings and some other amenities that they want on the bridge.
Okay.
The trail will be on, actually, the US side, I believe.
Okay. Just want to be sure right now, we don't have someone in charge of all these things, so
Yes, no, the trail will be on there.
Dot my i's and cross my t's.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, question on that, too? If you could, too, we're going to be heading up to Naco, and at one point, we'll be meeting with all sorts of federal groups up there. One of them will be transportation, so if you could get us whatever information, we can go apply for a grant now and get them on the radar that it's coming. May not be for this year, but for next year, I want to make sure we're ready and let them know it's coming.
Yeah, actually, we are working with a consultant to get the application together for bridge infrastructure. I think the date is the 15th of March. Does that do that?
Yes. Okay, but like I said
But we're going up, let's see, it's in February.
February.
Yeah, middle of February.
Just to give us a little bit of, little run-in time.
Yeah, we'll give you the information. Absolutely. We'll work on that today.
Thank you.
Now, we move to C24.
C24 is being pulled and revised, again, to correct the district number. It was District 3, and it's been changed to District 1, and I recommend approval.
Would you approve?
Second.
I got a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Move on to C32, pull and revise.
Good morning. Keith Wiley, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Natural Resources. We had to pull and revise to add a rider to adjust the bond amounts. Recommend approval.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before I make a motion to approve, Keith, we did such an awesome job at Lake Lisa. Are you going to have some, any familiar amenities for the challenge?
To be determined, yeah. I think the popularity of those two facilities, specifically the one at Lake Lisa and Wesley Chapel, is prompting us to really kind of reflect on our design options, so most likely, yes.
Okay. I know, seeing the audience, if we need any CB help, I'm sure we can get it, too.
Absolutely.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
May I ask Keith a question while he's
Yes, you may.
Driving through Starky Ranch the other day, I noticed we have yet to start the multi-use fields, so just, maybe I missed something? Did we start?
We did not start. We're nearing, we're going to be starting soon, but I don't want to say a specific start date yet, so. I know we're going through the procurement process.
We're still going through the procurement process.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I get a timeline of when we submitted that whole project, please? Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. C13, pull and revise.
Good morning. I'm Nolan Ristow with Pasco County Emergency Management. C13 has been revised to include three pages that were missing from the reference document that was uploaded, with no other changes, so we recommend approval with that change.
Okay. Little approval? Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Again, C10 is pulled till this afternoon during public hearings, so. Okay. That concludes consent. Let's see, let me get my pages going. Okay, we'll go to the regular agenda, starting with R33.
R33 is time-certain for 11:30.
Oh, it's time.
R34 is not time-certain.
All right, R34.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Bellis, Organizational Performance Management. Historically, local governments are put in a position to be reactive. You get floods, you go and you mitigate. You get storms, you go and you recover. We really have a historic opportunity right now, starting today, with your permission and approval, to focus on what Pasco County is going to be in the future, based on the things that are happening to us now, and we know will continue to happen to us over time. So, what we're here to ask for today is permission to begin with a Office of Strategy and Sustainability, and our focus will be on ensuring the future of Pasco County. Starting with definitions, and I've just gotten behind the science in this, and it's kind of interesting how, when you get a lot of scientific definitions for things, it gets a little confusing, and I think a lot of confusion over the years about resilience and sustainability, what does it really mean, but what does it really mean to us? And so, looking just at the basic definitions, it's a little bit of a scientific definition on resilience here. The capacity of individuals, communities, institutions, businesses, and systems within the county to survive and adapt no matter what kind of acute shocks or chronic stressors they experience. So, that's a mouthful. The way that we look at it is, the ability to prepare for and to bounce back from anything, anything, that impacts our business and the business we do. So, with that in mind, we look at the next, which is sustainability, and here again, the result of proactive planning and execution of initiatives to ensure that Pasco County will be able to provide required levels of service well into the future, regardless of acute shocks and chronic stressors. This is really about us making decisions today to ensure the future of Pasco County. Well, why are we looking at this now? You all know that based on what our folks, our neighbors to the south are doing and have been doing, we're a little bit behind the curve on this. There's already millions of dollars, lots of projects going on to create resilience and sustainability in our neighbors to the south.
Can I get a timeline of when we submitted the, that whole project, please? Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Keith. C-13, pull and revise.
Good morning, I'm Nolan Ristow with Pasco County Emergency Management. C-13 has been revised to include three pages that were missing from the reference document that was uploaded, with no other changes, so we recommend approval with that change.
Okay, little approval. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero. Again, C-10 is pulled till this afternoon during public hearings, so. Okay, that concludes consent. Let's see, here. Get my pages going. Okay, we'll go to the regular agenda, starting with R-33.
R-33 is time certain for 11:30.
Oh, it's time.
R-34 is not time certain.
All right, R-34.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mark Bellis, Organizational Performance Management. You know, historically, local governments are put in a position to be reactive. You get floods, you go and you mitigate. You get storms, you go and you recover. We really have a historic opportunity right now, starting today, with your permission and approval, to focus on what Pasco County is going to be in the future, based on the things that are happening to us now, and we know will continue to happen to us over time. So what we're here to ask for today is permission to begin with a Office of Strategy and Sustainability. And our focus will be on ensuring the future of Pasco County. Starting with definitions, and I've just gotten behind the science in this, and it's kind of interesting how, when you get a lot of scientific definitions for things, it gets a little confusing. And I think a lot of confusion over the years about resilience and sustainability, what does it really mean? But what does it really mean to us? And so, looking just at the basic definitions, it's a little bit of a scientific definition on resilience here. The capacity of individuals, communities, institutions, businesses, and systems within the county to survive and adapt no matter what kind of acute shocks or chronic stressors they experience. So that's a mouthful. The way that we look at it is the ability to prepare for and to bounce back from anything, anything, that impacts our business and the business we do. So with that in mind, we look at the next, which is sustainability. And here again, the result of proactive planning and execution of initiatives to ensure that Pasco County will be able to provide required levels of service well into the future, regardless of acute shocks and chronic stressors. This is really about us making decisions today to ensure the future of Pasco County. Well, why are we looking at this now? You all know that based on what our folks, our neighbors to the south are doing and have been doing, we're a little bit behind the curve on this. There's already millions of dollars, lots of projects going on to create resilience and sustainability in our neighbors to the south. It's time for us to get on board, because here's what we're facing. If we look at just what they're calling, what we call acute shocks, severe weather, it's not getting better, it's getting worse. The storms are getting stronger. We all know that. We see the science behind it. We're not, we're not immune to wildfires here in Pasco County. We've had them in the past, not recently, but you know how bad that gets. Pandemics. Was anybody ready for that one? That caught us all flat-footed. We didn't even think that was possible. We didn't even know what else could be possible in that realm. You've got geological subsidence. Do you know what that is? Yeah, that's the, that's the politically correct word for sinkholes. That's just our geography. It's how we, how we live here. And you know, we talk, you hear a lot about, about a lot of the issues, issues around the mental health crisis, and so you have active threats, and you see it all the time in the news. It's something that isn't necessarily going to get better, it could get worse. Then there's also things that affect us long-term and over time. So rapid growth, we've seen that the growth scenario that we're having right now has created a lot of issues for us, not the least of which is funding and trying to keep up with the needs of infrastructure. You have economic downturns. That's just a reality. It's going to happen, and it's going to happen over, over time. Increased costs, you've seen so many times, we've had to increase the cost of our projects because increasing materials and supply chain issues have hit us. These are all things that, yeah, we probably better be ready for in the future. Global warming, sea level rise, all the science points to it. We actually have seen models of what Pasco County's going to look like in 2050, based on sea level rise. So these are things that we know about. There's science behind it. We can't, we can't avoid them. Unfunded mandates, we see that more and more. Live local. Didn't see that one coming. So the point of it is that as we look at this in our business, we've got to consider, are we ready for these things as an organization? And one of the questions I pose to our directors is, look at the business you do. Because quite frankly, I've been here 13 years. We're better now than we've ever been as an organization. And thanks in large part to the support that you give us to do the work that we know needs to be done, to make our community better. The question though is, if our levels of service are really good now, do we know beyond a doubt that we are prepared to maintain those levels of service in the face of all these? Any of which could happen at any time and will. So as an organization, we're looking at this saying, you know, we really need to think about the business that we do. And maybe not just think in terms of, what are we going to do over this next year? But what are we going to do now that's going to impact the county in five or 10 or 15 years? If we don't do this now, we'll get caught flat-footed again. And that's what the world around us is seeing. So as Pasco County, it's our time to do this. The great news is that our mission, serving our community to create a better future, has the better future already in there. It tees us up to do this. And so, we now, and you as a board, can begin making decisions around what we do, what we plan for, what we fund, how we look at our business overall, that years from now, generations from now, will look back and say, you know, the board in place then knew what had to be done to ensure the future, the future and the life we have today. You're literally setting up a legacy here, which is awesome. So what does that require? Well, you know that for anything to get done well, it needs to be a focus. It needs to focus resources, people, time, energy, effort, money. And so what we are proposing and asking for your approval today is this Office of Strategy and Sustainability, which will in fact focus on those things that we need to do as a county to prepare for and be able to respond to and bounce back from anything that happens to us over time. So it is a very, very focused effort. We'll talk a little bit about what that means. The group that we put together already, small group starting with, are a group of experts. All of them are within the organization right now, in different parts of it. So we've asked you permission to move some of these pieces around and actually fund a couple of new positions, so we don't do damage or harm to where they came from, with their good work. But just to let you know who's in, on this team right away, we've got Alan Binalcom, he's actually in the audience today. He's known throughout the state as an expert on resilience and sustainability, so we've got that expertise. We have Anthony Thomas here. Anthony is managing the Restore Act program for us in the county right now. And he is an expert on the government or the federal side of grants and funding. We have Amanda LaHill, who is currently in planning and development. She's going to be part of our team. She's managing the Resilient Pasco Project and the Vulnerability Assessment. Absolutely brilliant. And then we have Jeff Harris. Jeff Harris is currently on my team. He is the one who managed the 4G program, award-winning 4G program, phenomenal. So we've got a super-strong team. A little added bonus to that is that we are taking my position and also my assistant's position, Jen, putting them into this group, because as we draw down these funds, we intend to use, to whatever extent we can, the administrative portion of that, to put money back into some of these other funds, whether it be the general fund, or if this was penny-for-Pasco money, we were pulling whatever it was originally to do this work. We want to use outside money as much as possible and restore those, that fund. So here's some of the things that we are going to be doing in this group. Part of what we want to make sure we do immediately is identify any gaps there are in Pasco County around resilience and sustainability. The big piece that gets us there is the vulnerability assessment that will be done late spring. So very quickly, we're going to understand the shape the county is in. One of the biggest pieces, of course, is going to be our vulnerability in infrastructure. So these are the things that we're going to target as a group to get fixed up as soon as we can and draw as much money as we can down to, to begin to address projects around that. The other part is to ensure clarity around the requirements for resilience and sustainability. We're going to provide education. Again, we've got a team of experts that know this stuff. They know what it means to our business. They know what it means to the various functions in the organization. So part of what we're doing is creating an education piece. I will say that we are not just going to be within the organization here, but we're going to be working with our constitutional offices. We're going to be working with the, the cities and that. We're going to be part of a regional and a statewide movement. So there's a lot of moving parts to this that are going to bring a lot of attention and focus to what we need to do to get us into good shape. The other thing we're going to do is a world tour, because what I was amazed to see is that we already have actions and activities going on throughout the county that are addressing resilience and sustainability, even though we haven't said as an organization, this is where we're going, we need you to do that. We have a lot of smart people here who know what they need to do to set their business on the right path. We actually have a 25, a 24-page report of those actions and activities that are happening already across the county. What we're going to do is go department by department to verify and validate that list of actions and activities, and then see what we can do as a team to help them. So example would be, we've already seen a few projects where two different departments are really trying to achieve the same thing, but they're doing it independently. We could help with the collaboration on that, perhaps on the funding on that, make better use of the funds, get better outcomes, better ROI on, on the investments. That's all part of what we're going to be doing here, so that we are really working collectively across the organization. We also identify new projects. The vulnerability assessment will give us a good idea of what we need to focus on, but I can tell you right now, it's, it's like you're watching airplanes sitting on the tarmac at Dallas Airport. We have projects that are lined up, just waiting for us to say, we have, we have the data, we have the resources, we're ready to move forward to do these projects and, and, and make a big difference with it. So the one thing, another thing I learned at this conference, everybody who's anybody is at the table, and they're bringing money with them, saying, please, give us a reason to fund your projects around this. So we are going to take, take advantage of that and leverage that to the, to the best of our abilities. We're looking for collaboration, not just within the county, but again, regional, state. We're participating in the groups, we're bringing them here. We're going to bring a focus, make sure Pasco County is not left out of anything, because that has happened with this in the past. So we'll, we'll make sure that we are front and center with all the opportunities that are available, available. I want to stress the next one. I use the word aggressive on purpose. We are aggressively going to pursue regional, state, and federal funding. The money is out there. You have to have a plan. You have to have a purpose. You have to be able to show the funders, we know what we're doing. We are going to do this project. Here's what the outcome's going to be, and they are ready to fund it. It's, it's, it's an amazing opportunity, it really is. And ultimately, the bottom line is, we want to ensure the long-term sustainability, that it's part of our planning now. So when we talk about our strategic plan that we're developing over the next, for the next five years, we're talking about our business plans and our budgeting. This is the conversation we're going to have around it, the basis of it, so that we're not just thinking one year ahead. Because something's going to happen to say, whoa, didn't see that coming. We want to see it coming. We want to be prepared for it, whatever, whatever that happens to be. And bottom line, this is our, this is our bottom line, and this is our, our tagline. Resilience is coming, resistance is futile. We can't ignore it. We have to do it. We have to move forward with it. And so what we're asking you today is, I know we have your support, but your approval of, of opening this new Office of Strategy and Sustainability, and that we can move forward and open the doors, open the floodgates and get moving on it. So questions? There.
Mr. Maron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, I'm so glad that you're leading the way for this. I like the team that you've got selected is great. I want to thank Mike Carbella for listening to the board and, and taking a look and seeing all the grants that are out there and how he's going to go after it. It's a great step forward to go do it. I'm excited about the spring. Talking about for action coming up, I mean, for extra help, Regional Planning Council does their summit coming up in May. I think it's April or May.
Be there.
And we had great participation last time. Even Florida Chamber's got some great things going on that they do in the summertime. I'm glad you're taking care of the silos, and I'm glad you're on this picture right here. Because when the Regional Planning Council years ago wanted to go put the resiliency thing in, all was a bunch of fluff. And I says, I want to see some construction modes go in there, and I got Terry to go with Sean. Didn't get it done quite quick enough, but later on, they did put in construction standards. We've studied what they've done in Miami-Broward, Dade County, and they've raised the seawalls. We were fighting it before. We've gone away from that, which is huge. I think going to communities, everything along these hard canals we've got, we can put living seawalls up there. We can raise them up three, four, five more feet, whatever it may be, that fits. And if we can find a way to let all these areas, like Gulf Harbors, let them go raise up another foot or two, do a project within them, so the more we can keep the water out into the Gulf of Mexico, so it doesn't come over the better off it is, and if people have the opportunity, and we make it easy to bring it together and do projects together, I think you've got some great opportunities coming forward. I think there'll be some very well-received, you know, Hudson area, Port Ritchie area, et cetera. All these areas need those higher seawalls to keep it out as we keep on going. Power plants down in Danilo, that thing sits in the ground, very vulnerable. And they're willing, you know, we're down there doing a, a trip with Chief Fossa, Anthony Fossa, about, you know, what to do down there. They're willing to go work with us to try to find a plan. There's got to be some great opportunities there. Baffle boxes, litter traps to keep trash from these flood events that may be coming in, to keep that trash from going out there, definitely would, a lot better for us. So thank you for taking this great step forward. I'm excited about what you guys are going to do. Thank you.
Just waiting.
Thank you, Chairman. So my great information here all makes sense, but what I didn't hear was what this $129,000 is actually for. Is this for new hire? Is this for raises to the people that you met? Is this for a full-time grant rider? Is this going to be continuously an, a headcount added into the budget year after year? That's the piece that wasn't made clear to me.
Absolutely, and I'm glad you asked that. So what we're looking at is, currently, three of the positions are in other departments, other branches. Two of them, public infrastructure, one is in development services. Didn't want to do damage to them, so we're asking for new positions so that they can refill the vacancies that are there. So that's.
So how many positions?
So there'll be a total of six. Three of them are already in my, already in my group. Two of them moved from public infrastructure, one of them moved from development services. So we're looking at the funding of two positions in this proposal. Another will be a VPI that we'll ask for in the, in the next budget cycle.
So this is something that we'll be having full-time for the next however long? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, yes.
Well, I'm just, I've met with Mark, and I, I think this is a wonderful project. And just because I'm looking at the time, I'm, I'm going to move for approval, and so we can get rolling.
I got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bellis. At this time, we're going to move to Mr. Bill Cronin for a PUDC update. He's always ready.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners, for, for hearing me this morning. As I present to you the Q1 update on Pasco EDC's activities related to our memorandum of understanding and our penny-for-Pasco agreement. So this is covering the activities from October 1 to December 31. And always start out with the good news, and you'll see your, your photos there. That's not the good news, but it's nice to see you guys on the screen. It's about the BDUCO announcement that we had back in quarter one, our first win of the year. 600 jobs, over $233 million of capital investment. That means we'll be raising our goal for capital investment this year to go beyond that. And I know that's very important to everybody in this room, but especially the jobs that it'll be creating. If you look at our pipeline, still really robust, 133 active projects. And you might remember, our normal time before, maybe two years ago, was about 35 active projects. So we are still, have lots and lots of looks, and, and talking about things like resiliency and sustainability are some of the things that actually drive those leads to us. But our leads are, are strong too, 87 leads. And that includes both existing businesses looking to expand, and also new businesses coming into the area. And I think one of the coolest things though still is that we're still very high in the advanced manufacturing. About 40% of our leads are in advanced manufacturing and our projects. That's, that says a lot about our community and also our ability to attract manufacturing, because Florida historically wasn't really known for manufacturing. And I'll just, quick sidebar, this last week, we had a, a job fair for another project that you all approved, Gary Plastic, up in the, north of Hudson Spring Hill area, Shady Hills. And they had over 1,000 people show up, lined up around the block. And that shows that we not only have the workforce, we have the workforce that's interested in working in manufacturing. I get goosebumps when I talk about this. We've got videos, and we're even at the point right now where TV channels would like to do more coverage on the area, and the company said, hold on, we can't handle what we've got so far, because they're going through those applications that they got so many. So a lot of good news, and, and that is our voters, our citizens, that are coming to, to get those jobs.
Bring them on, we can handle them.
I love it.
On that one, you know, there was a lot of chat online. That sadly was on one of those chat lines. And a lot of people commenting that they went and applied and, you know, are hoping. So it was a very positive response from our public.
They needed to direct traffic out there. There were so many people. And on a Saturday as well, too.
Mr. Chairman, to, to highlight that point, is we're going to go up to Tallahassee tomorrow, right? And I know Mike's going up tonight. That is a great argument for us to go through about talking about, we want people to work local.
Yes.
Right? That is exactly where we need to go, to say why we need to protect our industrial and commercial spaces for these companies to be able to come in, so they can work right here. So I want to.
You know, we need this report with us.
Yeah, we do. This is a, this is a big, if you can draw something up for us, a talking bullet point, we'll get it to everybody, and we'll pass that up. It's exactly the type of thing we're talking about. We need, we need, especially Pasco County is a bedroom community we've been avoiding for these years and made all these great changes, all these land use changes, all these comprehensive plan changes, to make it better for our people, have the opportunities, and this is a great argument for it.
And Bill's going up tomorrow, I think, too, so.
Tonight, I'll be up there tonight as well.
Oh, tonight, so that's good, so.
Yeah.
We'll be sending that message out.
We'll have good full dance card, and Moffett will be up there as well, talking about Spiros, too. So a lot of job activity, but I would speculate that a lot of that 1,000-plus that applied are Pasco residents. And that's people who probably, right now, if they're employed, may be driving every day south or to another county. So that helps us in so many different ways, in terms of congestion, but also providing opportunities right here in Pasco, instead of seeing that drain into other counties. Training programs, and we continue to work with Career Source, AM Skills, and a lot of our partners as it relates to training. Grants, they're not so interested in lately. And it turns out that part of the REACH Act from the federal government is to look at streamlining the process for Career Source and the intake for that, because what we've learned is that a lot of people are having trouble with the compliance piece of it. So you're going to see some really great stuff coming with training and working together with our state in terms of being more friendly to the employees and making sure that they don't just have to fit the WIOA requirements for those, those benefits. So.
Can I, can I touch on that?
Yes.
You know, as Vice Chair of Workforce and Economic Development at NACO, we've been having a lot of discussions on WIOA, including Virginia Fox's staff and her counterpart on the Democratic side, as they rewrite WIOA. And there are a lot of changes coming for workforce training money. They are really, really listening to us and putting some changes in, so real excited about, about what's coming.
And, and they are, the companies are taking advantage of the programs that aren't so cumbersome, too, so.
That's what they're fixing, and they're fixing that.
Yes, yes. So, so part of that Ernst &amp; Young strategy that they did for Career Source will include more streamlining of that function, to be able to make it easier for people to maneuver through that. But they're also using the Career Source job postings. Gary Plastic was one that used it. BDUCO uses it. So there's definitely a good partnership there, and they are listening to each of the partners in terms of what the needs are of our, our people. Company visits, still, that's our bread and butter, is getting out there and working with our local companies. It's not just about bringing other companies into the area, but taking care of those that are here and the workforce connections, and that's working with our partners, like AM Skills, like Career Source, in getting them over so that they know that there's no wrong door to approach as it relates to workforce development. Marketing, you're looking at our, our total earned media value, and I always joke, we still haven't figured out how to monetize that yet. But I guess that is what we would spend if we had to just go out on our own and make these advertisements. This comes from mentions from the media where they're telling our story, instead of us telling our story. our story. 204,000 already in that first quarter. A lot of it had to do with some of the great news that came out of here. Who would have thought that Pasco would be associated with the Rolling Stones, for example? With the distillery, with North Point, and the deal that you guys worked on with the loan extension. That led directly into that contract, and now they're going to be promoting that on their U.S. tour, and it does say that it's made here locally as well. So, great job on that. It's not necessarily our target industry, but it sure doesn't hurt us in terms of our brand.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
So, Bill, on that slide, you've got to be, you might want to check that typo there. It's run instead of rum?
Well, that's Spanish for rum.
Oh, no. It's a run.
Run for the Rolling Stones, okay.
It could be either one, believe it or not.
Okay.
But I think it is supposed to be rum, the alcohol, but it is a run of...
But it does work either way, okay.
It does work either way.
And I want to thank the board, because this was, this is a gentleman that actually takes a lot of local people that otherwise wouldn't be able to find work and go. And I watched these bottles running off the line. It's amazing what they're doing to make this thing go. It's a customized bottle that had to be built a certain way, and Spencer down there has got such knowledge to what the glass had to be, how it had to work, how he had to design it, and why he needed this run when he was working on it to make it all go. So, I mean, his expertise is well-respected, and the product's been amazing coming out. It's really kind of a cool bottle.
I think it was a 700-milliliter bottle versus 750, and they made a commemorative edition that went in the swag bags for the Grammys.
Nice.
Or, what's the music going? Not the Grammys, the, yeah, the Grammys. Yeah, Grammys. So, they each got something from Pasco.
Nice.
Still getting lots of website hits. Those are unique hits, but interesting of what they're looking at. They're still looking at where the companies are looking to start. That's a lot of our local companies on Smart Start. But look at where they're coming from in other locations, California, New York, Georgia, Virginia, and Illinois. And you know that at least three of those states are high-tax states. We may not be a low-cost state anymore, but we're definitely still a low-tax state, and that makes a big difference for long-term decisions. Again, lots of followers in our year-end review in our social media, and again, a lot of that is our local companies rely heavily on social media. Events, oh, by the way, if you didn't notice, we've streamlined this presentation to not get into the minutia in terms of the metrics. There is an appendix at the back of your PowerPoint that gets into that, and in past presentations, I skipped through a lot of that and went to the highlights. So, we actually just made this to include the highlights. So, the events...
I don't have any, I don't have your attachment, I don't have a presentation, I have nothing.
Okay.
Do you have it? I don't have any. It's not attached to your report.
We'll make sure you get it. Yeah, we'll remind them when we submit it each time that they need to make copies to actually put it in.
Yeah, that would be great.
Usually, we're not going to be putting anything confidential like project announcements and things like that in this packet, so no problem putting that in advance in the packages. And we'll send out the addendum that I just mentioned to you. Events that we attended, it's a busy time of year, that first quarter. Some of those are international events, some of them are local events, but nothing really stopped during that period. And where we're at with our stakeholders and shareholders, we're at 87 total private-sector investors right now, 43 board and policy council members. Tomorrow, we'll have our policy council chair, I think many of you know him, Mr. Andy Taylor from Tico Energy, will be joining us on visits in Tallahassee, as well as our board chair, Michelle Hinson from Shoemaker. So, this is one of the first times in Tallahassee that we'll have both of our chairs, as well as myself, working to visit and educate and advocate for economic development bills. Six new members.
What's going on on our screens? They're flashing, they're flashing on and off. Go ahead, Bill.
Okay.
You keep going, but we don't have anything else to look at.
Okay, then I will make sure to read some of this and not go through it too quickly. So, new members, Eschenbach Land Company, West Pasco Board of Realtors, M&amp;G Cleaning Services, who also was using Career Source with us as well. Health Tech LLC, Stan Tech, and South State Bank. And you might recall, South State sponsored, was a big sponsor and a speaker at the Economic Development Forecast this last week, which we had a overwhelming crowd sold out two weeks in advance. If I could advocate for anything, it's in bigger venues for events, because we're filling them everywhere we go. And it's not just our organization, the Education Foundation, some of them are having to go outside the county, and that's the last thing we want to see. Upcoming events, speaking of, growing global, and that'll be February 22nd at Florida Avenue Brewing. Commissioner Starkey chairs that committee. We're going to have speakers from Canada and Mexico, the consulates will be there. Almost sounds like a NAFTA event, but we are looking at a large regional trade mission going into Canada later this year, so it's a good time for a kickoff. Also, learning about trade resources that day. So, this is our second growing global event that coincides with International Day that you had a resolution for last year.
And we need, we need something that the, we can send out to business, our business contacts to encourage them to go attend, so...
Okay.
We need a flyer or something.
We'll circle back and work also with the PIO to make sure that we've got the right brand for both of us on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And they're talking about Canada, they're like our largest trading partner for the state of Florida, correct?
They sure are, yeah. Yeah, in several ways, not just trade, but foreign direct investment and homeownership. So, there's lots of times, one of the times after one of our storms, we were talking about resiliency, I was calling on companies in Canada, and it was so funny, because a lot of the CEOs wanted me to go check on their houses, too. They are a little bit more difficult to get our arms around because they know Florida so well, and they drive here. So, we don't always know when they're coming, but they're here. And it's not just the plates you're seeing on the road of tourists, but you also have a lot of business owners that are here and have second homes, too. And we should always take advantage of that. They're easy sell if we know, they already know what we have.
Commissioner Mariano, in your district, you have a business that exports stone crab claws to Canada. And it's, it would be great to invite them, because they have challenges, because they hold them sometimes too long. They would love to come to this meeting, so I'll try and remember the name, or I can get with you on that.
Redwood.
Perfect kind of business to come to our global.
Making me hungry. Not necessarily a target sector, but I'm sure a lot of people would be very interested in crab claws, and we've got other products that can go along with it from that area, too. If you don't have any more questions about the M O U agreement, I'll move on to the penny for Pasco. And are your screens up where you can see? Okay.
We don't have a copy of an M O U agreement.
Okay. So, highlights to this program, we start out with the ready sites, and a lot of discussion about industrial sites and protecting and preserving our sites for industry. I'll remind you that the ready sites program came with that second penny and took us a good solid five years to really get that program up and going to the point that people were purchasing those sites, the first being Amazon and the robotics facility up off State Road 52 in Belmi Brothers. I'm happy to say that that is restarted. You remember, Amazon put all their projects on pause about two years ago. This particular project is up and going again. And then BDUCO was another one of those. So, it's working, the market is responding, and it is a perfect segue into that conversation about live local and protecting the industrial land, that we've worked so hard as a former bedroom community to get that up and going. So, those soundbites continue to be important. I'm glad that we took the chance of going out and certifying and assessing those sites for business, because it really demonstrates that we are a forward-thinking community in Florida.
Mr. Chairman?
BDUCO took six...
Bill? Yep, go ahead. If I could, to talk about BDUCO. So, we made a $2.3 million investment for water and sewer infrastructure in there. That was a big move by the board years ago when we started this program.
Yes.
And look what it led to.
Yes.
Ten times value right off that, never mind whatever else comes.
Yeah. Yeah, so it just reminds us that sometimes we're looking at those short-term gains, and sometimes we're planting seeds for the future. And a lot of those big projects do take years for us to be able to materialize, but when they do, boy, we are extremely happy about it, because it was about five years ago that we put the money into the water and sewer there, and working together with the city of Zephyr Hills.
Great leadership. Thank you.
Four ready site visits just this last, this last quarter, and then we actually exhibited our ready sites at the National Commercial Real Estate Conference called NEAP. International program, we co-exhibited with Moffett Cancer Center to showcase the Spiros campus, and that was at Bio Japan in Yokohama. And we're still getting feedback from that and getting leads from that. It turns out, there are several similar parks that have the same type of setup in Japan, and they want to talk about collaboration. But this is exactly the reason why Spiros exists, is to be able to bring partners in next to them, and for us to be able to co-market together really made a big difference. And we were able to take Moffett to the S C U S Japan Conference. You might recall, last year, the governor hosted the Japan Conference in Orlando. We became co-hosts as Florida in Tokyo this year, so it was a really good showing for Florida, really good showing for our business community. We also had Global Tampa Bay attended Medica shortly thereafter in Dusseldorf, and that is with ourselves, Pinellas, and Hillsborough. Had a number of one-on-one appointments with companies looking to come in, and you'll see, again, a lot of life sciences focus for Pasco. And I mentioned before, we're planning an export trade mission, Vancouver, Canada, in September, dates are September 9th through the 12th. We're working with the embassy to secure appointments, as well as the Council General, the honorary consulate located in Tampa, and then the chambers, Canadian-American Chambers of Commerce. Enhanced marketing, that is, marketing these penny programs that are over and above our normal marketing. Pasco is a place to do business. Continue to see big upticks in social media. Workforce Connect after Turner Arbor was recognized by F E D C, and the program has got national attention on the Opportunity Connect. We're getting lots of great hits with that, and then also with our local partners. And the digital campaign, we actually will go into different areas of the United States when we're doing a business development mission, and we do what's called a takeover, and where we're putting out targeted media to the companies we want to get in front of well in advance before we get there. So, by the time we get there, they say, "Wow, isn't it a coincidence? I just saw something about Pasco." And of course, I don't tell them that it's not a coincidence, but we are targeting those areas before we even get there.
Yeah.
And then, again, Workforce Connect, we hosted Pasco 50 in quarter one. We presented at the Zephyr Hills Economic Development Summit, and that was very timely because of the new announcement with BDUCO in that area. And then also, our B R E Business Retention Expansion Team spoke together at a panel, talking about why workforce and existing business becomes so very important to our community. Executive Success Program, they met this last time at our newest incubator, which is co-located with AM Skills over in Holiday. If you haven't been there, I'd highly encourage you to check it out. We've worked out a wonderful partnership with AM Skills, and the companies that are starting on the west side are really focused on more of the manufacturing, the hands-on. So, having that equipment nearby really resonates with them. And I'll also share the Co-Starters class that we started this week at the new location. Had 15 companies sign up.
Awesome.
Yeah, Co-Starters usually is maybe seven to 10, and we had 15 straight out of the box on the west side. So, this is a really good sign, and we're happy about the results there, because this is an area where we need to put a lot of focus, especially as we look at redevelopment opportunities, too. And then, Smart Start, hosted our fourth food vendor fair with the county at the East Pasco Incubator Kitchen, otherwise known as Epic. I always enjoy that, not just for the food, but to be able to actually let the owners of those companies see your face while you're eating the food. It is a big thing for them to be able to put a person with their product and see the reaction. But that has, remember, our incubator in the east side historically had a lot of people from Wesley Chapel, and those areas that would go into Dade City, and when they graduated, they'd come right back to Wesley Chapel. And we said, "Well, that's not really helping the east side as much as we wanted to." When we shifted to food in the commercial kitchen, it has been a success every single year. I have no idea how our staff has managed to keep the weight off, because they get to sample everything out there in the commercial kitchen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, on the list of things coming up, we have the Employee Appreciation Day coming, and there's a bid on the street, I saw today, or last night, that bids out on the street. If you would let them know, they may join together and put a bid in for us, and they can showcase themselves with all the employees of the county.
Okay. And how, so that's a pretty large...
It's a pretty, yeah, very good.
It's a big one, yeah. Yeah, needs a big, big, big room. I'll definitely work with the administrator on that. And then, lastly, two of our members got commercial space, and, you know, this is extremely important, because, you know, when they, when they start, you remember, we had them at the crate for a while. They test the waters to see if they're ready. The worst thing that can happen to a lot of these companies is they go out, rent some space, and then find out that they don't have a market, or that their product isn't good. And they've committed so many resources to not just marketing, but to overhead, like buildings and bricks and mortar. Our programs help allow them to test the market, to see if their product works before they make that commitment. And you might remember, Lanky Lassie's over in Dade City...
I love those cookies.
Has a great presence. They're doing international now, they're exporting. We also had St. Leo at the New Wellness Center came to us April of last year and said they were losing their cafe operator, and we had a pitch contest where people from our incubator on the east side were able to pitch their creations, and we've got two companies that actually now are located in the Wellness Center. So, next time you're out there, check them out, they're good, healthy food for the students, and they're local. And with that, I'll stop. This is the team, if you, if you know most of them, I always want to make sure that you realize it's not just me. I've got a wonderful team behind us, and they continue to do great work. We do have an offer out right now for somebody part-time at the incubator on the east side, so hopefully you'll see another picture here soon. And with that, so the metrics report, the addendum that I mentioned, is behind that, and I'll make sure you all get a copy of that. So, I'll stop there, see if you have any questions, and in the interest of time, I hope you like the new format that we were able to get through some of the big bullet items.
Mr. Mariano? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill, I just want to thank you and your team for doing such a phenomenal job. I mean, since you have come on board, you've just elevated this county to just tremendous new heights. Everything you're doing is dead on the money, we're seeing the rewards over and over again. So, I just want to thank you for the great work you and your team are doing, and...
Thank you for your support.
Appreciate your pick of Pasco County. Mr. Starkey?
If we get to it, we're going to have a discussion on live local, and so hopefully, I'm hopeful we'll get it done this morning, because there's people who want to zoom in this morning and listen to it from around the state. So, I would encourage you to stay.
Okay.
Because it has big ramifications for us, if we get to it.
Yeah, we're happy about where they're at in removing the industrial piece of that, because when you look at the, we've worked so hard, as I mentioned before, to get that industrial land up and going, and David Engel presented, I want to say about two years ago, on the cost of losing that industrial land at over $2 million an acre, but the opportunity cost of losing the jobs, the opportunity cost of being able to put a company there and keep people from driving on the road to South Hillsborough or Pinellas. But then, in addition to that, the double whammy of the abatement-type feature with the ad valorem is just, it's horrible, because it just exacerbates the problem. But I know that there's still work to be done as it relates to the commercial side, but I do believe that the, removing the industrial really helps us on the economic development piece of that, because it almost is reminiscent of the days of putting people development piece of that, because it almost is reminiscent of the days of putting people, you know, poor people on the wrong side of the tracks. Why would you put people in an industrial area that doesn't have service, that is going to have trucks and food deserts, things like that? It really exacerbates the problem to do that, and we've worked so hard to develop that industrial land. I think the decision was made in a vacuum, and the fact that we're required to have a comprehensive plan from the state, I think it's kind of hypocritical that they would reach down in and meddle with that when we've worked so hard to do it. So I want to make sure that that's on record, because that is so important to what we do. And honestly, I don't think that the way it's structured right now actually helps anybody if they're eligible at 120% of AMI and 80% of AMI. You're still looking at $1,500, $1,600 for a one-bedroom apartment, and having children that are of that age in this community, that is not affordable housing. You're not helping anybody that is market rate, and telling them that they only have to have 70 of those doesn't even put a dent into it. So we're pretty passionate about this one, too. Our next board meeting, Commissioner Waitman is going to be speaking about it along with our policy council, and that is going to be something that you'll...
When is that?
Next week.
All right.
Thursday or Friday?
Needs to be quick. Yeah.
Yeah, and this is going to be something, we'll pound that drum with you as we're in Tallahassee this week. But I've been doing this a long time in a lot of different places, this is the wrong way to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd think that Live Local was for affordable housing and all, but not at all affordable to anybody I know, so.
It is 100% market rate, not only is it market rate, it's high market rate. It's not helping the people it was intended to help, and on top of that, to give a refund to those developers on top of that, when we're losing that opportunity cost, just, again, it's problem after problem after problem. We'll have to learn how to serve those areas, and like I said, it goes back to the days of when poor people used to live on the other side of the tracks. That's the vision that I picture, I'd love for people to remember. You're not really helping people when you do that.
What, it's not going to be to developers, it's going to be to institutional investors?
That's correct, and that's what you're seeing with the majority of our multifamily. There is not really any local developers that are doing multifamily, they're all out of state. So their allegiance to this area and their understanding, I would question, because they don't have the same skin in the game as we do. We definitely need housing, but it needs to be planned, we need to be at the table. You guys have put a lot of money into transportation networks around the county, that's all for nothing if we ignore all of that.
Okay. Chair?
Mr. Waitman?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I'm not sure if you're aware, but this will be part of the conversation today, but there's another clause in there where existing Class A can apply and be reclassified as Live Local. And we have two in Pasco, existing buildings, existing multifamily units that can be reclassified, which is a game changer. So anyway, just more to pay attention to, so.
How can you all make plans if somebody's reaching into your pocket after you've already set an agreement and expecting those revenues coming in? I'd heard that last week as well, too, and I don't, I just don't see how that's possible. But yeah, people are trying to find ways to take advantage of it. This is very opportunistic for some people, and I hope we all remember who they are, too, when they come back later and ask us for more.
All right. Very good.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I need some help, I guess. We bounced around on so many different items. I still have Res One waiting for 11:45.
We have a R-35 for 11:15.
Okay, R-35, they're here?
Mm-hmm. They walked in.
All right, come forward.
God, my contacts are so bad, I can't see.
That helps.
So we're on 35.
Okay.
And then we jump back.
Want to make sure it's morning still? Doc, how are you still younger and I'm getting older? I don't understand this. Everyone, my name is Reagan Weiss, I am the founder of Hub Life Charities, and once again, we had a very successful Hubbleeen this year. It's been a phenomenal collaboration with Parks and Recreation and Natural Resources, and once again, we were able to raise $25,043 for the county and for Parks and Recreation, Natural Resources, see where that money's going to go. I will tell you, broken backs, broken toes, cars broken down, things happen, but it's a great event, and the smiles on the kids' faces during Hubbleeen has been absolutely fantastic. So I want to get off this, I want to give it over to Marcia Alfado, she is our Madam President of Hub Life Charities.
Thank you, Reagan. He does a good job at saying my last name. As Reagan said, my name is Marcia, I'm the president of Hub Life Charities, and it's just an honor for me to be a part of such an organization and to be able to serve my county. I've lived here for over 20 years, and it is my home. And to be able to work with people of the caliber of Mark and Christina, and our over 200 volunteers that we had, Hubbleeen is our biggest fundraiser that we do, and we, sometimes we wonder, why do we do it? Why do we do it? And this is why we do it, so that we're able to give back to our community. So we want to thank you all for the support that you give us, the community, the support that they give us, and we're going to keep doing it as long as we're allowed, so thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Don't be shy.
Rob Baller, Superintendent for the Parks and Trails. We are very appreciative of the partnership with Hub. They do a ton of work. We obviously are familiar with the amount of efforts that go in for events, and the amount of labor and resources that they put forth to make this thing happen. You know, Reagan alluded to the experiences and memories that these citizens are being able to make. Beyond that, when they make this contribution, we have scholarships that we're able to give out for our summer day camp programs, for aquatics, for swim lessons, things like that. So beyond the day of the event, the efforts that are going forth are making differences throughout the year, so we greatly appreciate their efforts and partnership.
I noticed Keith ran up here when he heard there was a check, I think.
Honestly, sir, I just wanted to make sure Rob didn't get me in trouble saying anything about that.
Okay.
Well, I am just very grateful for your efforts. You know, as I've said many times, our Parks Department, after the 2008 recession, it just took a huge hit, and we're still climbing out of that hole. And so every penny that you raise there is really appreciated and goes to a wonderful use, and we're very grateful, for sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Hubbleeen as well. Your group does a phenomenal job, and I want to thank our Parks Department who worked closely with you to see the benefit of this for all those citizens that maybe can't afford a day camp, now will get that opportunity. So definitely helping the community out, so we greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you all that you do. This would go a long way in Parks, because it seems like Wiley's always got his hand out. He has, I will tell you, his job's never done, because he's always building for the future, and we keep bringing people in, and he keeps building out. So it's very much so that we all work together, and I just appreciate so much that what y'all are doing, so. All right.
Yeah, let's do it, then we can get in our discussion for a little bit.
All right, let's go down and get a picture. Work attorney and Mr. Bradford, stay up here. Does this go? Oh, it's not my name. I knew something was wrong.
Oh, am I supposed to be up there?
I'll stand up.
You look better down here. You're with the people.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We go outside?
The only time certain left is RS1.
Oh, yeah.
That's the only one.
That's all, okay.
That's time-stated.
Thank you. We bounced around so much, it was trying to keep up with all of it. So... We have, we have a few minutes left, so we can start miscellaneous business. Mr. Waitman?
Thanks, Chair. Short for mine today, excited to hear what Commissioner Starkey has to say. We have some pictures up there, I don't know if they're coming, but anyway, Leadership, I think some of us participated in Leadership Tampa Bay in their Pasco County Day. Just grateful to Leadership Tampa Bay, and it's always a fun group with such a assortment of backgrounds, and people engaged, and they're wanting to learn about Pasco and how they can do business here, or live here, what have you. Hey, thank you to Pasco Porter Campus PHFC for hosting everybody for such a fun morning. I look forward to participating in that event for years to come. Next, we had AutoNation of Wesley Chapel, they're, they have a Mercedes affiliate here in Wesley Chapel, but AutoNation just cut the ribbon earlier this week after the fire station push that the Chair and I were at, and excited to have them, they're at Tampa Premium Outlets. And so they're open for business, and pretty much all their employees, a couple dozen or more are, they live in Pasco, and they're excited not to have to commute south, and their manager lives in Pasco as well, so it's good to meet that group. And then the last item, just for a policy consideration, piggybacking on Commissioner Starkey's Arbor Day in our comments, Planning Board Member John Moody sent a note, and just something for us to think about, and it might be the direction we want to go in the future. And he said in his email, under our comprehensive plan, we currently give a density bonus to developers for preserving wetlands, which, you know, we can't normally develop those anyway. So his thought is, for us to consider is, rather than prohibiting the removal of a certain tree, what if we offer the density bonus for preserving certain trees, rather than use it for wetlands, since wetlands can't be developed? And so I appreciated Planning Board Member Moody's email, I thought it was of merit and to bring up for discussion, and maybe not full-time today, but just kind of check the temperature of the board, maybe we can bring something back after we research, research that subject matter.
That is, okay. Ms. Starkey?
Okay, first, so Jack and I went up for FAC, and our main focus while we were up there was, of course, Live Local. Do we, do we have enough time to get in that discussion, or are we going to wait till the end of the day?
Well, I mean, we've got probably about 10 minutes, I think, and if you think that that affords enough time, I mean, I think, you know, to the point...
We can do the rest of miscellaneous later.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go and get this done.
Okay, so just, the reason this picture's up is years ago, I asked for us to put covers over these, because those look really bad, they're permanent pumps on the side of the road, right? You remember me asking for this? So nothing's happened, and apparently the guy who's in charge of it doesn't work for us anymore. I'm not asking for anything elaborate, just some kind of cover, wooden house, whatever you want it to look like, so, because that is just very unattractive. So just, let's find a way to shade these, cover these in a more attractive way. All right, so on Live Local. I have asked for staff to talk to us about where we are. Jack and I went in and had, with Sean, had a meeting with Senator Pasadomo, and, you know, we are very grateful that they've taken industrial out. We did mention that none of our, none of our 12 applicants were on industrial land. But frankly, what's more alarming to us is the loss of current, currently built apartments, and apartments soon to be built, and maybe David could speak about this, it's a rolling five years. It's not five years from today past, it's a, it keeps going. And how long does it keep going? That's a question I don't know. So what was so interesting is we didn't find one other county or city who knew that there was a possibility that existing apartments, and future apartments, can come off their tax rolls. So we didn't get much headway on that. As a matter of fact, one of the questions I asked to Jenny or Jennifer, who's the author with Senator Pas, and Senator Pasadomo's staff, I said, how many can one county expect to absorb off their tax rolls? Is it possible to cap it? And she said, no, that would be illegal to cap how many can come off our tax rolls. And you know, what we tried to stress was, this is not a one-size-fits-all solution. What may be, 120 AMI in Miami-Dade, or another county, may be workforce housing. And I think we need to say workforce housing, not affordable housing, someone said, but it isn't in our county. And so we are very much in the bullet on this, and I wonder if they could put up on the screen while we're talking, the list that our Representative Jaeger was able to get from FHFC, if our staff hasn't seen it, and all of you, of the 120 apartments that are currently through the FHFC restrictions, well, they had to apply by December 31st. There were some that were denied, but there were about 100 that qualified to be existing apartments to come off, and there were, I think, 19 or 20 that are refurbished apartments that will be coming off the tax rolls in various counties and cities around the state. City of Gainesville alone, I believe, have eight. And I would think that with the incomes of those students in Gainesville, that every single one of theirs could come off, and same for any college town. So David, or I don't know which one of you wants to speak first, but we have...
Let's start by answering your question. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
It's 35 years. It's not, you have to come along, it's only five years, but the tax exemption...
The tax, can you hear me now? The tax exemption is in place for up to 35 years, it goes through 2059. So in theory, these apartment complexes, if they continue to qualify, they could be off our tax rolls for the next 35 years, and David Engel has done a financial analysis, just for the first two apartment complexes, if you look at over 35 years, I think it's about a $38 million loss of tax revenue, just for the first two apartment complexes in Pasco.
Well, and that's only if they stay at the 26% and 56%, but they can, that's a rolling number.
Yes, yes.
That's a moving target.
Well, given the fact that the rents are just market rate rents, there's nothing really stopping them from trying to qualify all of their units for the exemption, and if they qualified all their units, I think we were about $86 million loss. So it's a significant loss to revenue, and that's just two apartment complexes. I think Commissioner Starkey, he referenced the fact that you've been in some meetings where there's been other apartment complexes that have said that if they get, if these first two get the exemption, this may just be the tip of the iceberg, there may be other apartment complexes that seek the same exemption.
Yes, in a meeting yesterday, I was notified by one of the participants that he was bringing in two more apartments that are coming.
The other problem with that is, that comes off our ad valorem taxes, somebody has to make up for all those services, and that's the rest of our citizens are going to be charged extra to pay in for services in those areas where they're not collecting...
And by the way, it doesn't just affect our taxes, it affects the school district's taxes.
Right.
Swift mud.
Mosquito control, all taxes.
All taxes.
Including our general obligation bonds. So it actually exempts them from repaying the general obligation bonds that our voters approved in 2018.
Can I touch on something that the chairman just said? And something that is really, you know, every county's unique, and we have a unique set of problems. We have an extraordinarily high number of homes that are homesteaded in our county. We're up in the mid-70%, I think, and you can read that in David Engel's report. So if we have to raise our millage to cover the millions of dollars we're going to lose, it is the un-homesteaded homes and our businesses that are going to feel the impact. And so many, you know, many of those people in the un-homesteaded homes are lower-income people that can't afford to buy a house. And I talked to people who own some of those homes, and they said, well, when you raise my tax, I just pass that on to my renters. So we're exacerbating the problem without a benefit to our citizens.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
For example, the one of the city that did get involved in this, is the city of DeBary, Belushi County. Their program, their AMI at 120% is $65,000. A one-bedroom market rate is $1,743, two-bedroom over $2,000. So there's someone similar to us that is going to go through the same exact problem.
Right.
So this is, I think when the others find out how significant this is and what their ramifications could be for them, I think they're going to get aware. I just hope our state senators and legislators up there are really paying attention to what this is going to do. This is a time to like, we just have to, and I'm grateful that the industrial's eliminated, but we've got to take the commercial right out of it. And all these tax breaks, even for mixed use, if it's market rate, it's not helping the people they think they're trying to help. the people they think they're trying to help. It may sound good, may be a great soundboard for affordable housing, affordable housing, but it's not taking care of the workforce people, the, the teachers, the police, police deputies that are out there that are struggling in these high rates that are here. If you want to go affordable, let them go affordable. Bring the AMA down 80%.
So we are trying to get the law changed. I think you all know that. Ralph has prepared a nice little set of talking points in this folder about Live Local, so that when you go up tomorrow, you, you have all the facts. I'll be up there too. I've already spoken to the Committee on Committee Affairs. I know Commissioner Starkey and Commissioner Mariano tried to speak to the Fiscal Policy Committee. My understanding from Ralph is that fiscal policy was originally scheduled for tomorrow morning, but then it's been postponed, I believe. So I don't think there'll be another committee meeting. We are still hopeful that the Senate President will change the law. We've made our objections very clear. But so far, there's been very little movement from the Senate President's office. And it appears as if the rest of the senators and legislators are taking their guidance from the Senate President's office on this issue. If we can't get the law changed, I think the Board already knows you've authorized our office to start filing lawsuits. We have a demand letter and lawsuit ready to go. It's drafted. Some of you have seen it. So Sean asked us to hold off until the end of the week to see if we get the law changed. But if we're not successful this week, he said, go ahead, send it, get the ball rolling. I do feel, can't promise you a victory, but I do pretty, feel pretty good about some of our arguments. One of them is that we don't think these rents are a charitable purpose. The whole way this law was orchestrated, the whole reason it was, they were, the legislature found it to be tax exempt, was under the theory that this was a charitable purpose.
Right.
Historically, charitable purpose meant 501(c)(3) organizations. That's what charitable purpose meant. This is the first time we can find where the legislature has given a tax break to a for-profit corporation under the theory that it's charity. But in reality, in Pasco County, it's not charity, in my opinion. These are just market rate rents. The fact the two apartment complexes that came in first didn't even reduce their rents at all. These, these are the same rents they were charging prior to Live Local, same rents they're charging now. So they're basically getting a tax exemption for doing virtually nothing. So that's kind of first step. If we don't get the law changed, go ahead and file against those two, those two companies. We hope they go away. Or we hope that they don't go away. We hope Mike Wells reads our complaint and says, I'm not issuing these exemptions. They're, I'm, I, these may be unconstitutional, these exemptions, so maybe I should not be issuing them. I don't know what Mike Wells will do when he gets them, but we'll have to figure that out when we get to that stage.
Ms. Chairman?
Sorry. The other thing we started doing is in the rezonings for apartment complexes, and I know Commissioner Starkey wants to talk about this, we started putting in conditions that they waive the abhorrent tax exemption. And that's not going to do much in terms of the existing apartment complexes, because they, they're not going to be bound by those things. But at least on the new ones, we're trying to put that condition in. Now, I've spoken to Commissioner Starkey. She did ask me whether we can condition site plan approvals on them not applying for the tax exemption. And my answer is, if they're seeking something from us, like a waiver of neighborhood parks or parking, I think at that point, we would have a basis to condition those waivers on them not seeking the abhorrent tax exemption. So now, if they've already got their site plan approval, or they're built, I'll just be honest with you, there's not much we can do other than the lawsuit route. That's really going to be our only remedy if they've already got a site plan approval and/or they're built. Which, I would argue that if they're built already, I'm not sure what the purpose of this law was to begin with, because Commissioner Mariano has raised the point, just simple economics. I mean, if you already built your apartment complex without a tax exemption, you didn't choose to do it because of the tax exemption. You chose to do it because it was just beneficial for you to build the apartment complex. So in my opinion, the tax exemption for the existing apartment complex is just a giveaway, is really all it is.
Can you talk about, and I'm, I was trying to find the email here, and I can't find it, the way my email is, about how many current apartments are vulnerable, and how many we have approved but are not built yet?
So I'm going to let somebody from Planning touch that, because I don't have all that data in front of me.
Yeah, I actually have the numbers here. PDD had pulled together some, some very quick ballpark numbers here. And so I'm just going to get you the high levels. Within the last five years, we've had approximately the equivalent of 36,000 apartment dwelling units or entitlements that have been approved within the past five years. And approximately 18,500 site plan approvals.
Can you, but can you put that, I know, I know it is going to be per room that will come off the, per unit that will come off the tax roll, but about how many apartment complexes, that says there, I think?
I would say that in the last five years, talking about, oh, complexes, I mean, we've, we've had about 5,000, we've had over, close to 5,500 units constructed within the last five years that are built.
Do the math if you did, say an average of 280 or something.
Yeah, and then another 2,600 units permitted, but not finished.
Is that the paper that came out this morning?
This was the, the document that came from Terry's team. Yes, ma'am.
I thought it said how many units are, how many apartment complexes on that paper?
Assuming 20 units per building, I mean, this is, they're, they're doing some rough, some rough math. 267 buildings, so I mean, that, that's roughly what, 10? You know, if you do 20 units, oh, I'm sorry, 20 units per building, I'm sorry.
I think we must be around 30, 30 to 40 apartment complexes that could apply?
Let me bring Brad up real quick. Brad?
Chair, ma'am.
I'm looking for it.
Ms. Marano, do you have something?
Yes, I was, I was going to say, as far as the lawsuit goes, you know, there's always a chance you don't win a lawsuit, right? I, I know we did this a few years ago with the Wesley Chapel area about doing a moratorium. I, I think we got to protect ourselves. This is, if it's going to go this way, we, we need to protect ourselves. It's a moratorium around the whole county as we study this. And I think you get a lot, a lot of significant things to look at. What will be the economic impact to our, to our citizens if, if this goes through and stays the way it is? Or even if they make some changes, they don't make all the changes we need to get. So I, I want that to be out on the table and get that formulated as well.
So I'll just quickly comment on that. Couple issues with the moratorium. One is that it has to be limited duration, right? So-
It's okay.
The longest they can go is a year. And presumably, it's so that you could formulate, you know, standards for these multifamily projects, design standards, et cetera. There is a small possibility you might capture somebody who, what I'll call an innocent person in a moratorium. So you, you have to be careful the way you craft that. My personal preference would be that you start, first start looking at, and I've discussed this with Commissioner Starkey, maybe plan amendments, you know, those are the easiest thing for us to defend. You've got a lot of plan amendments that you absolutely have every discretion to not approve those. And some of them, you'll see some on the next agenda, in fact, I think, for plan amendments to, for apartments. So that would be sort of the easiest thing to start attacking right away, is putting a hold on plan amendments that are, or that are getting to the levels of density that would allow for apartments. When you get into moratorium, then you have to be very careful about how you're crafting that. I'm just, we talked about the moratorium, one point is the nuclear option. I still think it is kind of a nuclear option. My preference would be that you start with the litigation, start with some of the conditioning of the zoning approvals, look at stopping some of the plan amendments that are allowing for apartments. That would be my preference. I'm not saying you can't do a moratorium. I want to be clear about that. But it's a little bit of a gray area under the law, so it's not, would not be my first choice that you do that.
Let me, let me make a suggestion.
No, I agree. If I could just follow a little bit. So I'm, and, and I appreciate that. But as you say, if it's a year, a year gives us a good amount of time. And maybe the legislature, if they don't get it right this time, maybe they do a special session or something to, to get it right coming up. I don't know. But it's, it's worthy of us, because this could be absolutely devastating with what's built and what could come in. And we've got to, if they're not, if they're going to throw this on us, we've got to protect our people.
Yeah, I will say, putting aside the tax exemption for a second, because I realize that's got a unique issue, because these are already built, buildings. But on the land use side, the litigation, in my opinion, is starting to work, in the sense that as soon as the Board announced that you were going to start suing anybody that invokes the land use preemption, anybody that was in the system applying for those things withdrew their application.
Yeah, but I have someone who said they're going to sue us.
I would say bring it on.
54 and 41.
I feel comfortable defending that.
Yeah, bring it on.
Okay. Go ahead. I mean, I, if they want to try to invoke a law that I think is unconstitutional, I'm happy to defend that.
All right.
What, what was, what was in that memo this morning? There's 36 land use approvals for apartment complexes. There are 70 preliminary site plan approvals. That's 100. That's 100.
So actually, if I could explain that a little bit, Brad Tippin, Planning and Development. Yeah, the 36 land use approvals, that's, that's land use approvals through MPDs and other factors, different things. That's in addition to actual Euclidian zonings that are already on the ground today.
Well, what's that number?
So that's another thing. The actual site plan approvals, the 70 site plan approvals that we've done, that's your vulnerable piece right now. There's 18,500 units that have been approved in site plans that could seek this conversion that, that we're talking about. A portion of those have been constructed. Some of them are in the process, et cetera. So that's, that's kind of where we're standing. If you're looking for that number of actual vulnerability, it's, it's roughly that, that 18,000.
Right.
When we were first doing the math on those two apartment complexes, and if they went 100%, 100%, well, I guess it's, if they go 120 AMI, 75%, right? If they go 80%, it's 100% off the, off the abhorrent. We were figuring it was about a million dollars a complex. That's just for year one. You know, as, as you go through, as you go through, that, that delta that we're losing multiplies, because our, the abhorrent would have been going up every year. So we just, it's just a massive, massive hit, that how do we even plan our budget when we don't know how many in, in an apartment complex are going to roll off? Because it's a rolling number. For example, I believe that the one that's 26, that's 26 units, I think that's the one in Trinity, but I'm not 100% sure. I believe they're at the number 26, 120 AMI, because they went through, they're applicants, and they, they know the salaries, because you have to give that when you apply. So they know what they have without doing anything. So every year, that number's going to change. And so how do you predict what the hit is going to be?
Yeah. We need to floor this item so we can finish our business for this morning. We'll floor it to the end of the day, because there's a lot of things to be discussed and come up with the right answer. So.
Table it.
Yeah, table it, excuse me. Floor it, table.
All right. In that case, then let's move to RS1, sir, and then we can-
Yeah, we're ready for RS1?
Yeah.
They're coming in here.
So a few people are now going out for a photo. Who's doing the presentation?
It's Chair's side of-
Our star leader here, well, as members of our representative, we'll take the resolution out there.
Yeah, they're all like-
There's a bunch of people outside.
There is. We're going out there for a quick look.
It sounds like a gacko, a geese, doesn't it?
A what?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Start!
Wait, or do, give me a start?
Are they coming in, or are they stopping?
I, I thought.
Okay, let's just-
I'm happy to start. Just let me know when.
Just go, 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 go.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Resolution number 24-060, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, commending the 2023 Star Performer, Star Leader, and Star Team of the Year. Whereas each year, Pasco County recognizes a Star Performer of the Year, Star Leader of the Year, and Star Team of the Year for their accomplishments. And Raz, Sarah Sherkim, Sherkrim, okay, has been selected to receive the 2023 Star Performer, Performer of the Year Award. And Ben Deal has been selected to receive the 2023 Star Leader of the Year Award. And Raz, I apologize ahead of time if I-
Massacre the names?
Exactly. There's quite a few. So I'm going to go as, as best I can, but my, my apologies if I do. The Wiregrass Ranch Sports Campus Transition Team, including Matthew Benajar, John Olland, Doug Anderson, Eric Anderson, Luis Anderson, Lorraine Atwater, Todd Babensack, Shelley Bandy, Nicholas Barr, Andrew Baxter, Todd Bailey, Jesse Bednerick, Elizabeth Blair, Chad Blaze, Earl Birch, Troy Caston, Matthew Christian, David Conlin, Chuck Corden, Christina Corden, Elva Correa, Carolyn Kramer, Todd Kersey, Anthony DeFeo, Anita Dirks, John De, John DeJean, Connor Donovan, Kyle Endress, Monica Ewalt, Emily Farrell, Alex Fizano, Danny Ferns, Denise Foreman, Joe Fox, Curtis Franklin, Kayla Getz, David Goldstein, Ademaro Gomez, Samantha Grand, Peter Grayling, Art Grief, Ashley Grindstaff, Soraya Hairston, Michael Hall, Laura Hayhurst, Eli Hazen, Marjorie Hilton, Roy Hernandez Rivera, Louise Hite, Barbara Heitzman, Greg Hodges, Carolina Howard.
Just do the best you can.
Farida Haller, Ben Isaacs, Lindsay Jansen, Shallow Jean-Louis, Tom Johnson, Tambry Lane, Emily Leathers, Ryan Lewis, Karen Lloyd, Mari Vett, Maldonado Figueroa, Michael Malloy, Jeffrey Mannion, Anthony Martinez, Matthew McDonough, Lawrence Miller, John Morel, Timothy Myrick, Brenda Nardini, or Nardi, Raul Nardi, Jeffrey Neely, Katie O'Neil, Ronnie Outston, Gail Parnell, Sarah Finney, PJ Sykes, Matthew Raffelli, Carrie Roberts, Consuelo Sanchez, Sean Sanders, Shannon Saracina, Nina Schrak, Christopher Schrer, Brian Shaw, Robert Shipley, James Sykes, Isaiah Smallwood, Michael Smith, Kathy Spinks, Doug Steiger, Terrence Stewart, Cindy Zapan, Brian Taylor, Jennifer Trolini, sorry, I know I got that one wrong, Daniel Treasure, Adam Thomas, Ralph Trammell, John Van Martyr, Sarah Vogel, John Waltz, Laura Weeks, Keith Wiley, Ian Williams, Holly Willett, Melissa Winings, winnings, maybe, and Cecilia Yancy. Yes! Have been, yes, have been selected to receive the 2023 Star Team of the Year Award. And Raz, for an organization to become premier. It must attract, grow, and support a workforce of servant leaders that are dedicated to improving the lives of people, contribute to a purpose larger than their individual job, and perform at the highest possible level day in and day out. And whereas these 2023 award recipients consistently demonstrate Pasco County's core values through an impeccable work ethic, dedication to service excellence, and achieving quality outcomes in every situation. They serve as an example to their fellow team members of going above and beyond and exemplifying the expectations of Star Performer of the Year, Star Leader of the Year, and Star Team of the Year. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida. That said Board hereby congratulates our 2023 Star Award winners for Pasco County and commending them for their outstanding efforts in serving our community to create a better future. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 23rd day of January 2024.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passed, 5-0. Mr. Cavalla.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know it was like a graduation ceremony there, reading, reading that. And thank you, Board, for your indulgence of signing that many resolutions. We have a lot of great things to be proud of here on, on this team. With nearly 4,000 employees implementing the policy of this Board, we want to recognize a lot of the good that happens out there. And so we have a process. Every department nominates a Star Leader, a Star Performer, and, and some of the branches and teams get together and some, and support teams. And these all filter up. And we have branch winners that then go on to, to the administrative and the executive leadership team to select one. And it's a very hard choice. So, you know, we bring Ben Deal forward here, you know, as our Star Leader of the Year, our Star Performer, who she's unfortunately deployed, I think, up in the Panhandle as well. And so we'll, we'll, we'll work her another day. But then the team with, with the Wiregrass Ranch Sports Campus, and really, taking what, what went south pretty quickly and, and turning it around and turning it into a success was truly a team effort. Members from the County Attorney's Office, from parks, tourism, DMO, IT, just across the board, really came together on that. And I'm, I'm just going to ask Ben to come up here and just say a couple of words, Mr. Deal. And then, and then maybe a couple representatives from the Wiregrass Sports Team. And then whenever you'd like to adjourn, I have the team outside, and they would love the opportunity- And they would love the opportunity for a picture with, with the board. But you say whatever comments you have here, we're going to make sure that they all get them. So I'll turn it over to Ben unless the board has any comments.
Good. All right, Ben.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Just want to say how appreciative and humbled I am to receive this award. And if you guys will indulge me, I have a short list of ninety-six people I'd like to thank.
That's right.
I'm teasing, I'm teasing on that, yeah. Yeah, I know. I will say this, as honored and appreciative as I am of being recognized, you, you never achieve something like this alone. And so I do want to thank my team. I want to thank Mike, first off, for the leadership that he shows and the backing that he gives to our training and development team and to my boss, Mark, who's a fantastic leader in his own right. And my team who's back there, Lori and Ty and Terry, they make my lives easy. And actually, every, every county employee that volunteers to help with our Pasco U training. It certainly is a team effort to, to do this with, like you said, nearly four thousand employees. So thank you for the recognition. Again, I'm truly humbled by this. And, and thank you all who are here in attendance for all the help and support you've given me over the years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here we have this token of our appreciation. We do, we appreciate it. Appreciate it.
That's it, that's it.
There you go.
So thank you, thank you for the time and the, actually, the support, obviously. When, when I wrote the nomination, I wanted you to appreciate the scope of work, right, through the transition. And when I originally got the assignment, when I was sitting in the county administrator's room, and Adam was there, and Ms. Pearson was there, and it was Dan Biles at the time, I heard like the Mission Impossible soundtrack going through my head, like you have forty-five days to execute said transition. And so quite honestly, I didn't think we were going to be able to do it. Because I don't think I've done anything in forty-five days working with the county that's, you know, we've been able to actually get it done quickly. So, and that's not a criticism, there's processes in place for a reason. So anyway, we would not absolutely have been able to do this without your support. And all of those, I don't know what the total number was, a hundred and six folks. I'm sure there was more that touched this project. But you have an awesome group of employees. And that without their leadership from their directors and everyone involved, we would have never been able to successfully move through this transition. So I've been working for Pasco for almost fourteen years. And this is definitely one of my proudest moments, just in terms of total teamwork. So thank you very much.
Great job, great job.
I know y'all probably have something to say, so how about, Jack?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I want to say, this is a tremendous achievement. It was such an important feat to accomplish. We were in a situation that we wanted to change, we needed to change it for all the right reasons. And to make this happen is such a big event for us because not only have you set this groundwork to take the seamless transition of our biggest investment in sports tourism, which is economic development for this county, but now we're in a position to actually gather data to go look at what can be done. And as we take our steps forward down the road, whether we keep control or we sub out from there, whatever it may be, what we're doing right now is setting the stage for great work. And the work that you guys have all put into it has been greatly appreciated. We just can't thank you enough. It was such a critical, critical thing to happen. So thank you all very much, greatly appreciate it.
Mr. Bradford? Good. Mr. Whitman?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, you know, came on at a tough time and a transition coming. And, but we all, we all knew that you could gain control of the situation and make the Wiregrass Sports Campus great again. So, you know, thank you for, for, for taking the lead and working through something that probably none of you have ever done before. But successful outcome, the kids love it, they have a great time at the campus. And we're excited to see what the future holds. So thank you for all your hard work and all the team out there, your dedication. Congratulations to you all, and excited to see what we can do in 2024.
Ms. Starkey?
And to be brief, I'll just echo my fellow commissioners, great job. You know, we didn't know what we were getting in, getting into. And I'm, I'm glad where we are today and all the great successes that you've had. And look forward to the future successes and our photo that we're going to go take right now, right?
Yeah.
And, and to the others that won the award too. Because I know this one was for the team, but we had some individuals. So thank you as well. We appreciate your dedication to the county and the people, and the citizens of Pasco County.
It's always a team effort. We certainly appreciate each and every one, what you do, because it's, it's paid off. It'd be hard to choose another team to take your place because y'all are doing such a great job. So I'm going to have a hard time picking somebody else to lead. Y'all keep leading, keep doing it the right way. And maybe we don't have to do that, so we'll look for it in the future. But with that, let's adjourn the meeting. And outside, we'll go take pictures. And we'll be done.